Hello everyone, this is Dan Wizenhunt, editor and publisher of Decaturish.com. This is our last DeKalb School Board Virtual Forum for DeKalb County Board of Education District 6. The incumbent for this race, Dejana Dacosta, expressed some interest in the forum. He, this was scheduled over a month ago. He contacted me this morning today to say he would not be there. Our policy is to move forward with the candidates we have, even if that's just one candidate. The candidates in this race are the incumbent, Dejana Dacosta, Janet Hughes, and Vanilla Mason. Vanilla Mason, who did take time out of her day to join us and answer our questions. Vanilla, how are you doing?
I'm doing well, Dan. How are you?
Cannot complain. Vanilla does have a professional obligation. We're going to try to be respectful of her time and get her on her way, but we're going to ask her a couple of questions. Vanilla, can you give us a one-minute statement about why you're running for school board?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Dan. So I'm running for school board because I have about 20 years of experience in education. In the work that I do, I partner with school districts across the country to help them solve some of their most critical problems. And so I want to be able to take that experience and bring that back here to support my home county in DeKalb. I also believe that all children can learn and that all children deserve access to a high-quality education. And so the school board is a strong determinant factor in making that happen. And so I want to be a part of, I want to be a part of that work in DeKalb County Schools.
Vanilla, your opponent recently voted to fire Superintendent Cheryl Watson-Harris, and the school board terminated that contract. What is your opinion of the school board firing Cheryl Watson-Harris?
One thing I can say, Dan, is that, you know, school district leadership, especially in the role of superintendent, is very important. And having continuity in that role is very important. And I know that we have a high turnover in the superintendent position here in DeKalb County. And so, you know, that does have a negative impact on the district's ability to be able to carry out their vision. And also it impacts the level of achievement that our students can have. And so, you know, I'm not sure of all of the details surrounding that decision, but I will say that, you know, strong leadership, a continuity of leadership is very important to the success of any organization and especially a school district.
If you're elected, one of your first priorities is probably going to be to hire a new superintendent, assuming the current board doesn't make that hire beforehand. What are you looking for in a new superintendent?
Thank you. So first, I would be looking for someone who is ready to call DeKalb County their home, someone who wants to invest in our community, and who is willing to stick around. That's first and foremost. Because what we don't need in DeKalb County is another superintendent to be here and gone in a matter of a year or two. In terms of leadership, I'd be looking for someone who has a track record of making great decisions, someone who has a strong record for supporting children, and someone who, you know, through their record and through their work, you know, have made decisions that put students first.
So District 6 obviously doesn't include Druid Hills High, but Druid Hills High has been sort of the catalyst for a lot of the recent drama. As I'm sure you're aware, that district, that school was pulled from a list of renovation projects. Your opponent, Dejana Dacosta, supported that. What is your opinion of the district's decision to remove the Druid Hills High modernization project from that list that was being submitted to the state?
Right. And yes, and you know, once again, I'm not sure of all of the details surrounding that decision, but when you look at the video that those students made, you know, the students are learning in deplorable condition. You know, I have a child in DeKalb County, he's in kindergarten. And if I went to visit my child's school and it looked like that and his, you know, he had to learn under that condition, you know, I would be highly upset and ready for some change to be made. You know, I'm not sure how that school could be added to that CMP, you know, with all of the review and feedback that was put on that plan, and then how the school could be removed, you know, late into all of that decision-making. But once again, those students should not have to learn in those conditions. And even more so, the teachers should not have to teach in those conditions.
Um, do you think that the school board meddles too much in the day-to-day affairs of the district?
What I will say is I think that, you know, as school board members, you know, we need to focus on what the job is at hand. And I think, and that's for any position, you know, folks need to kind of understand the boundaries of their role, if nothing else but for efficiency's sake, so that, you know, things can get done. There's so much on all of our plates that when we, you know, try to do other people's job, it may be hard for us to do our own job. So, you know, I would say that as a school board member, we have to focus on the basics. We have to focus on, you know, hiring and managing the superintendent that we bring to the district, as well as focus on enacting policies and creating a condition so that the superintendent and their board or their cabinet can lead the district.
Do you think, I like that you're being really succinct with your answers, by the way. That's very helpful to get into all the questions. Um, the district has a reputation for being vindictive and retaliating against its critics. Do you think that that reputation is deserved, and if so, what would you do to change it?
Um, you know, I have not heard that, so I definitely can't speak to that. What I would say is that, you know, the district and the board especially, we have to focus on, you know, doing what's best for children. Like all of the decisions that we make, all of the work that we do, our focus has to be on doing what's right for children, making sure that the folks who are working directly with our children each day, which is our teachers, that they have the resources, they have the facilities, they have what they need in order to do the hard work that they're doing with kids every day. And if we are, you know, in any way being vindictive or spiteful, then that would not be supporting those efforts.
What is your opinion of the leadership of current board chair, Vicky Turner?
Um, you know, what I would say is that we got to just look at the record. So what we do know is that we have a high turnover of superintendents in our district. And we have to ask the question, why is that? You know, why have we not been able to, you know, maintain a superintendent for a substantial amount of time in order to be able to realize the vision that we want to see in DeKalb County? You know, I'm sure that, you know, the blame or the onus for that, you know, can be spread around, but ultimately, you know, it lies with the school board.
Uh, Vicky Turner recently told the Atlanta Journal-Constitution that the students who made that video were pawns of adults. She also suggested the district didn't need to spend money on Druid Hills High renovation project because that school, which is a Title I school, is quote "nestled in the middle of affluence." Do you agree with her statements?
So part of my platform is around equity. And I believe that, you know, as a school board member and as all educators serving in the district, that we have to make equitable decisions across the board so that all of our students and all of our students get access to the resources that they need. And so that would include Druid Hills High School.
Um, what is your definition of a well-functioning school board?
That's a great question, Dan. Um, I would say that a well-functioning school board is one that, you know, works very closely together. I'm a big proponent of building relationships. And so I think that strong relationships amongst board members is key. I think that collaboration amongst board members is key. I think, you know, having a certain level of a willingness to be educated about issues that you may be less familiar with or less comfortable with in order to make decisions that are going to be the best for kids. And then I also think that a part of that is, you know, being able to have a great relationship with the superintendent that you bring on board. As board members, you know, we are the ones who will create the conditions for the superintendent to be successful. And so I think that that is a part of our duty and responsibility. Because ultimately, the board and the superintendent have to work together collaboratively in order to, you know, bring the vision to life that the board and the superintendent have brought forth to the district and to the community.
Would you support returning to virtual learning if COVID-19 cases increase?
Oh, that is such a sticky topic, Dan, and, you know, just being a parent.
Vanilla, you with us? Oh no. Uh, Vanilla Mason is having some technical difficulty. I'm going to see if I can get her back into the meeting, so give me one second. We'll be right back. Vanilla? Vanilla, are you back with us? Yes, no? Oh my. Connecting audio. We were on a roll, you know, we had a, we had a bunch of questions. Actually, Vanilla was rocking and rolling through those questions, so we actually had gotten to most of them. She did have a prior engagement. Uh, but it looks like, alas, she is having some technical difficulties. And that is, uh, that's unfortunate. But you know what? Um, we're still going to give her credit because she showed up. And her opponent, Dejana Dacosta, who's the incumbent board member, did not show up. Janet Hughes got the invitation as well. Janet did not show up. I'm going to give this two more minutes, and then we're going to call it. But I did want to, you know, talk a little bit about, oh, you back?
I am. My apologies. My phone overheated and it shut down my Wi-Fi.
Oh my gosh.
I'm so sorry.
What a mess. Phones do not like heat. So where we left off, do you support returning to virtual learning if COVID-19 cases increase?
Right. And I was stating that, you know, the challenges that we had in my own household, trying to educate my five-year-old son, you know, when the district had to cut out for a week. You know, honestly, I hope that we do not ever have to do that again. I do understand that, you know, if cases rise, you know, it becomes very unsafe for students to be in school, then we have to make that call when it happens. But Lord knows, I definitely hope we never have to do that again.
Um, you're an educator, so you know a little bit about this. What is your view of school choice in DeKalb County schools? What should it look like, and how should people be able to access it? And what support should the district be providing?
Yeah. So yes, I am an educator and, you know, I believe strongly in public schools. Although I do think that parents should have, you know, some options. But I do believe strongly in public schools. And, you know, making sure that public schools have enough funding to operate. Because we know one thing about public schools is that those schools have to serve all students. Like they don't, you know, aren't able to pick and choose, you know, who the students are that come into the building. And so I think that we definitely need to make sure that we have enough funding and adequate resources to run our public schools so that we would have a place for all of our students.
Uh, what should the school board's policy be on how quickly work orders for the district should be completed? Do you think the board should adopt a policy of setting a deadline for work orders?
Um, you know, that sounds like common sense. You know, when we're working on any major projects, of course, we want to have, you know, our strategic plan, our implementation plan, as well as a timeline with expectations around deadlines. And so that definitely sounds reasonable.
Uh, tell us what you think career tech should look like. How should the district, how much should the district invest in it? And should the district have more career tech centers?
You know, so I am a college graduate. And, you know, I have hopes that my son also will be a college graduate. I'm one of the first college graduates in my family, and I'm very proud of that. However, we know that college is not an option for every student, and not every student wants to go to college. And so I think that, you know, the school district should have opportunities for students to learn and acquire other skills, marketable skills, that they can use once they graduate so that college is not their only option. You know, we want students to be prepared to go to college. We want them to be prepared to step into careers and also have certifications so that they're not starting off at entry-level positions. We want to prepare them to be entrepreneurs. Many of the jobs that our kindergartners, including my son, will have access to have not even been thought of yet. And so as a school district, we have to try to prepare them for these jobs that we don't, that don't even exist.
What do you think the school district's responsibility is in terms of offering services like school or community health clinics?
Um, I think that is really important. And, you know, DeKalb County is a very diverse district. And so some areas of the county may need or want, you know, need those services more so than others. But I think that they should definitely be provided. You know, I'm all about whole child, uh, whole child services. And I think that the school should be a part of not only educating the child, but as well as providing some of these other social supports that they may need. And even if they're not delivering these services because it's outside of our expertise, but we're partnering with organizations to bring these things to our students and into the community.
Vanilla, I said I would be respectful of your time. You asked if I could give you about 20 minutes. Uh, so with that said, would you like to make a closing statement before we wrap up?
Sure. Thank you for that. I just want to say that I am very excited about being a candidate for the DeKalb County School Board. In these times in particular, what we need is very strong leadership, and I want to bring that. We need passion. We need someone in this seat who cares for students, who is going to roll up their sleeves and do work on behalf of communities. My focus will be around engaging all stakeholders, including businesses and community partners, making sure that we have equity across the district, as well as ensuring that we have excellence in all roles across the board, excellence from our students, as well as excellence from our parents, teachers, administrators, and including our board members. And so thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak with the community today. And I'm so sorry about the technical difficulties.
That, that was, uh, the fact that you showed up and to answer hard questions is appreciated. Um, this is the Decaturish.com Twitch forum for DeKalb School Board District 6. The candidates are incumbent Dejana Dacosta, who was invited but declined to attend this morning, Janet Hughes, and Vanilla Mason, who did make time to attend. Vanilla, we appreciate you so much. All of our elections coverage about the May 24 election can be found on Decaturishvotes.com. Early voting for that starts on May 2. If you appreciate these opportunities that we give candidates to be heard by the community, please visit SupportMyLocalNews.com. It's where you can become a paying subscriber of Decaturish. You can help us get reporters to meetings. You know, I've got a $300 open records request that I've, from DeKalb County Schools right now that I'm about to pay the bill on. Uh, we have to host the website. Uh, we have a full, couple of full-time employees now. So we're, we're churning, you know, we're moving along, but every little bit helps. And we are going to really focus our efforts on DeKalb County Schools. And if anybody is watching related to the district, who might be interested in what we have to say about that, I will say that the days of, of the media ignoring what happens in DeKalb County schools are coming to an end. And we're certainly going to do our part to make sure that our government is transparent and that our leaders are held accountable. So if you agree with that mission, if you think all schools deserve to be safe and healthy, if you think all citizens and taxpayers of DeKalb County deserve good government, then please visit SupportMyLocalNews.com, become a paying supporter today, and help us continue that important work. This is the end of our forums. All coverage can be found on Decaturishvotes.com. Thank you for watching and have a nice weekend. This is the end of our forums. All coverage can be found on Decaturishvotes.com. Thank you for watching and have a nice weekend.